Before being called, please rise. We can have a moment of silence, keeping our thoughts and prayers, our military, law enforcement, all in order to respond, as always, return from state. Thank you. Plagues?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
In the course of the public meetings of the open public meetings law, notice of this public meeting has been published in the Home News Tribune, Courier-News, and Star-Ledger newspapers, and posted on Middlesex County website, as well as on bulletin board in the Middlesex County Administration Building, at least forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting, which shall be entered into the minutes of the meeting.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Scott LaBarber, County Commissioner Kenny, County Commissioner Hopple.
Here.
County Commissioner McCall.
Here.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Mar.
Here.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Here.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Here.
Any resolutions?
Yes. Proclaiming November as carryover month in Middlesex County, proclaiming November as Alzheimer's over in this month in Middlesex County, recognizing the retirement of Rose Pushing as president and CEO of the YMCA of the Tuchan Edison Brookbridge in South Amory, recognizing the honors of the car and flying racing, recognizing the 150th anniversary of the Rory Club of Prairie New Brunswick, proclaiming December 1st, 2025, as World AIDS Day in Middlesex County.
So a motion to adopt, above, is a ruling resolution.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Kenny.
Yes.
County Commissioner Hopple.
Yes.
County Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Mar.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes.
Crossbones.
Each commissioner having provided the list of correspondence received by the clerk's office since the last meeting. This correspondence will be kept on file in the Office of the Clerk of the Board for reference.
So a motion to accept the correspondence.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Minutes for approval.
Minutes of the regular meetings held on Thursday, October 16, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. and Thursday, November 6, 2025, at 6:00 p.m.
So a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Hopple.
Yes.
County Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Mar.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Yes, for October 16th, President not voting for, but rather six.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes.
You have a public hearing and final adoption. Ordnance is?
Notice of the public, notice of this public hearing was published in the Home News Tribune on October 10, 2025. This public hearing was authorized at a meeting of the Board of County Commissioners held on October 6, 2025.
Clerk will read ordinance 479.
File ordinance number 479. File ordinance providing for the undertaking of various capital improvements at and for certain facilities of Middlesex College located within the county of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, appropriating $2,750,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $2,750,000 bonds or notes of the county of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, for financing such appropriation, and authorizing the public hearing to be held on November 17, 2025, at 6:30 p.m., and authorizing publication thereof.
Open up the meeting to the public, any comments on ordinance number 479. Motion to approve the ordinance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. So a motion to adopt ordinance 479, and final reading.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Hopple.
Yes.
County Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Mar.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes.
Notice of this public hearing was published in the Home News Tribune on October 19, 2025. This public hearing was authorized at a meeting of the Board of County Commissioners held on October 6, 2025.
Clerk will read ordinance number 40.
File ordinance 40. File ordinance providing for various improvements in the Middlesex County magnet schools and by the county of Middlesex, New Jersey, appropriating $7 million, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $7 million bonds or notes of the county of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, for financing such appropriation, and authorizing a public hearing to be held Thursday, November 17, 2025, at 6:30 p.m., and authorizing publication thereof.
This time I open up the meeting to the public, any comments on ordinance number 481, and final reading. You move close the bulk portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So a motion to adopt ordinance number 481, and final reading. Motion to approve that.
Aye.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Kenny.
Yes.
County Commissioner Hopple.
Yes.
County Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Mar.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes.
Clerk will read ordinance number 481.
Notice of this public hearing was published in the Home News Tribune on October 19, 2025. This public hearing was authorized at a meeting of the Board of County Commissioners held on October 6, 2025. File ordinance 481. The Middlesex, the county of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, appropriating the aggregate amount of $2 million, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,904,761 in bonds or notes of the county to finance part of the cost thereof, and authorizing the public hearing to be held on Thursday, November 17, 2025, at 6:30 p.m., and authorizing publication thereof.
This time I open up the meeting to the public, any comments on ordinance number 481. You move close the bulk portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So a motion to adopt ordinance 481, and final reading.
To approve that.
Aye.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Hopple. County Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Mar.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes. For the commissioners, Commissioner Charlie Kenny.
Thank you, Director. Just that the million pay new program for 2025 was coming to a close this month, a portion of eighteen roads in twelve municipalities were done, forty thousand tons of asphalt were resurfaced, there were also roads done in three county parks, and several municipalities participated in the shared service agreement with us. That's all I have, Director, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Liston Hopple.
Thank you, Director. Month of November marks the starting point at which the Middlesex County Finance Department begins the annual budget cycle. Our goal for this upcoming year is to continue to adhere to the county's short-term and long-term fiscal strategic plan, to control and reduce expenditures whenever possible without sacrificing the quality or quantity of services, decrease overall debt and annual debt service, fund a capital improvement program to maintain and elevate the county's infrastructure system, enhance our labor force by investing in state-of-the-art technology and education, effectively mitigate the increased cost of goods and lending, identify pressure points for the upcoming and all new budget cycles. The Commissioner Board is committed to adopt a budget that guarantees that the county continues to perform at a high fiscal level and maintain the exceptional level of services that taxpayers deserve.
Thank you. Commissioner Chanel Scott McCall.
Thank you, Director. Good evening, everyone. From the Arts Institute, Middlesex County, on Saturday, December 6, from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m., celebrate the holiday season at East Jersey Old Town Village. Enjoy eighteenth and nineteenth century holiday music, listen to Christmas short stories, and tune for reading of Charles Dickens and Christmas Carol. Embrace yourself in the holiday spirit with the radio play version of the beloved classic It's a Wonderful Life. Don't miss this unforgettable family-friendly holiday experience with festive music, carols, storytelling, wagon rides, children's crafts, and impressions. I conclude my report, Director.
Thank you. Commissioner Deputy Director Chantin Nara.
Thank you, Director. As Thanksgiving is nearly here, many of us Americans will be enjoying gathering with family and friends. And although the time of year brings parties, celebrations, and festivities, it's also a time when accidents occur. Burning candles and gas stoves left unattended, people driving impaired after inviting at various festivities, people driving distracted, or just rushing from place to place. Each of these situations can not only bring tragedy and disaster to yourself, but to anyone else in the vicinity. So we of Middlesex County, we want all our residents to enjoy themselves, but we want everybody to enjoy themselves safely and happily. And so we ask all of you to please be aware, and on behalf of the department, we wish you all a very happy and safe Thanksgiving holiday. And the added note, I know Commissioner Tamara will probably have something to say regarding food inequities, but I just also want to add, there are a lot of people suffering this year, and for those of us who might be in a better place, I would just really encourage you to be generous, more generous maybe than you have been in the past this year, because so many of our friends and neighbors are truly in need. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Charlie Tamara.
Thank you, Director. This December, Blazin Park returns at State Theater, Joseph and Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat. This year marks the 28th anniversary of the holiday tradition. The performances are on Saturday, December 27, and Sunday, December 28, at 2:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. Tickets are on sale now at the State Theater website. This year, we are teaming up with the Coming Home Middlesex to collect gently used coats and winter wear at all the Joseph performances. Re-donations will be spread to communities in the, to Coming Home, like its promise, Grand Bay area YMCA, and we hope to see you there. And as Deputy Director Sanz Nera talked about, the food insecurity, I run a food pantry in Edison, hold hands of hope, and our numbers are up over 40% from what they were last year. So this year, biggest need that I see at our pantry is turkey, turkey breasts, and frozen chickens and ham. So as I always do every year, I guess if you receive that free turkey, you have free ham at the ShopRite store or any grocery store you shop by, and you don't use it because you go to someone else's house, please donate it to a local pantry. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and I just urge everyone to have safe holiday travels. Okay, Mr. Kelso, any resolutions yet?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Resolutions held?
There are none. Resolutions voided, there are none.
This time I open up the meeting to the public, any resolutions listed on? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Charlie Cradaville of Brunswick, I'm the editor of New Brunswick today. I'll start with page five. Oh, sorry, actually, page four, your meeting for the new year, the reorg meeting is going to be held at Middlesex College, 5:00 p.m. Will you allow the public to make public comments like you do tonight?
We're just having a hierarchical reorganization meeting, and it's going to be standard to what we've had. So we're not having any public comments unless it's, unless it's, resolutions listed only.
Okay, so you're not going to let the public speak?
It's on resolutions listed.
Okay, and for what reason don't you want the public to be able to make comments? That's not a reason, that's just saying that you made the choice. Why are you making that choice?
Because that's the choice that we've made.
Again, you're not providing a reason, you're just saying, that's what we're doing, that's how it is. But that's not a reason. What is the reason that you won't let members of the public, the people you represent, speak to you freely during the meeting like you're doing tonight?
You can grandstand what you want, and it's all about, it's a ceremonial reorganization meeting, that people get sworn into office, and we conduct other county businesses as well.
And previously, you allowed the public to speak, but then you got sick of us and you don't want to hear from us. Is that the reason?
If you have anything that you want to discuss with any of the commissioners, we have office phones and emails that we accept, so if there's anything that's pressing in your judgment to contact any of the commissioners, you're more than free to call any commissioner here or any part of our administration.
I'll start to do that, more often. Next one is a union contract, can you give me the particulars of it?
Yes. It's a four-year contract, consistent with all the unions, it includes a same increase in the standard of living cost plus the coverage of the same half for healthcare, so it's a 400% increase each year for four-year period.
Thank you. Moving on to page five, 1282, this is another $4 million for media buying services, so this is the county spending $4 million in taxpayer money to purchase advertising, is that correct?
This is to, for us to promote all the programs and services that we offer, and also to promote the businesses that have expanded into Middlesex County, creating opportunities in many ways for our residents. John, if you want to elaborate some?
Just as you mentioned in the past.
Is my time ticking away while this is happening?
You want an answer, you said. You asked, you asked a question.
It was a yes or no question, so what's the answer, yes or no?
The answer is that we're promoting all the businesses and programs and services that we offer, so all our residents understand what we have to offer.
And you call it, excuse me, you call it advertising, reality is our outreach and communication has always been part of our budget, consolidation of the office and marketing is more effective means, and reach both our business and our residents in Middlesex County, more effective communication. That money's been in the budget for the last fifteen years, now it's centralized to support all of our operations.
All right, well, I'm just going to ask rhetorically, you don't have to answer, but how many units of housing could be built with $4 million? How many social workers could be hired with $4 million? How many of those hungry families could be fed? How many of those food pantries could be supported with $4 million? Instead, the money's going to media companies to advertise Middlesex County, and I think you could do better things with that money. And I'll move on to page nine, or page 10 here. Corrective action plan, what's in those, what was the findings of the audit, 1313?
Corrective action. So Charlie, we received comments from our whole order for both our civil audit and our circuit audit. For the single audit, we had deficiencies with our REO and temp program reporting, this was primarily attributed to our long-term fiscal officer retiring and a poor transition to the new one. More or less, we've centralized all functions within the Middlesex County Finance Department, we've trained additional staff, and we've built more indebted reporting, and further refined our charter accounts.
Okay, good. What did you say about that transition from the old seat?
There was a fiscal officer that was appointed directly for the law enforcement office, we've since centralized everything to the core finance department.
Oh, my. Okay, and I presume I'll be able to get a copy of both of these short pieces, okay. Moving on, 1316, the Eldrick Hotel, what is this, 220,000 for?
1316. Time is up.
In response to questions, that's part of our program in revitalization of the Eldrick Hotel, as you're aware, as it becomes a key asset with the work that we're doing to attract the new businesses and venue at the college.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public on any resolutions listed?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, okay. Any commissioner have to go on anything separately? Okay. 25, 1287. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Kelso.
Director, a motion would then be in order to adopt a consent agenda consisting of resolution numbers 25-1277 to resolution 25-1375 excluding resolution 25-1287, if you go to the bottom.
So a motion to adopt a consent agenda. Roll call.
County Commissioner Kenny. County Commissioner Hopple.
Yes.
County Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Mar.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes.
Now, Director, with the appropriate consideration of the resolution excluded by Commissioner Kenny, and that's 25-1287. So a motion to adopt, motion to approve that.
Aye.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Kenny.
Present our vote.
County Commissioner Hopple.
Yes.
County Commissioner McCall.
Yes.
County Commissioner Deputy Director Mar.
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara.
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios.
Yes.
At this time, I open up the meeting to the public. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hi, Catherine Hunt, of my township, 08831, and I'm here today to speak on the Immigrant Trust Act S3672A4987 and the Immigrant Trust Act Resolution. There has been a movement to pass the Immigrant Trust Act, which will allow New Jerseians to seek protection and support from state and local agencies without fear of deportation. Increasing trust in public agencies allows all people, regardless of immigration status, to seek public services that are essential to help education and well-being of their families and the broader community. This builds stronger, fairer, and more welcoming New Jersey for everyone. The Immigrant Trust Act will limit New Jersey's involvement in the federal detention and deportation system by creating a new data privacy set of protections for people who interact with state and local agencies, and by strengthening and codifying the separation between local law enforcement and federal immigration enforcement. The Act ensures that local resources are used to support local priorities rather than fund federal immigration enforcement. It protects personal information by limiting the circumstances under which public agencies can collect information related to immigration status. It requires public schools, healthcare facilities, libraries, and shelters to adopt model policies to help people feel safer seeking the public services to which they are eligible. It prohibits state and local law enforcement from cooperating with federal immigration authorities when doing so is voluntary under federal law. It eliminates carve-outs in the New Jersey Attorney General's Immigrant Trust Directive that deny the same protections to immigrants entangled in the criminal legal system and that disproportionately harm black and brown New Jerseians due to racial disparities in policing and prosecution. It creates reporting requirements to track compliance with the Act as well. The comprehensive protections afforded by the Act are critical for empowering New Jerseians to live their lives without fear that routine interactions with state and local government, be it registering for healthcare, reporting wage theft, theft, or contracting, contacting local law enforcement, could lead to permanent separation from their immigrate, from their loved ones through immigration detention and deportation. As the federal government continues to span immigration detention and new threats loom over immigrant communities, the Immigrant Trust Act is more urgent than ever. To be a fair and welcoming state, all New Jerseians must be able to support their families and fully participate in their communities without fear. Passing the Immigrant Trust Act is an important step in making that a reality. Governor Murphy signed an executive order to protect our immigrants, however, and especially considering the heinous, desperately evil behavior of the Trump administration and ICE, it is felt that this order is not enough. Bills have been proposed in the New Jersey Legislature but are not progressing. The Immigration Trust Act Resolution is a current resolution for towns and counties to propose that the Immigrant Trust Act be passed in New Jersey. As of this writing, 25 towns and four counties have signed on. Today, we're asking that the Middlesex County Commissioners pass a resolution in favor of the New Jersey Immigrant Trust Act. Thank you very much for your time, and for any questions or if you need any further documentation, please ask the clerk to contact me or any of the others who speak in favor. I'll be glad to help you.
I'll just make this statement, that it's been a longstanding policy of the Board of County Commissioners of Middlesex County, that we don't pass resolutions opposing or in favor of any kind of legislation that's in front of the federal government or the state government. And we understand your, your passion, and we understand your commitment, and we appreciate that. We comply with the Attorney General's directives, and we ask that, we just hope that any individual that's taken by ICE, that they be treated with dignity and respect, but we haven't, and we don't, pass resolutions in favor of any federal or state legislation.
And may I speak? I'm sorry, I timed it up.
Time's up.
Okay, I thought he was speaking.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Reverend Seth Copperdale, Reform Church of Highland Park, thank you for this opportunity to share with you, commissioners. First of all, if there were 117 white residents who had been disappeared from our county in the last two months, not only would this be on the agenda as something to talk about, but we'd have a moment of silence, the flags would be at half-mast, and you all would be scrambling to work on it, or you'd all be losing your jobs at the next election, all right? That's how many people have been taken away in three workplace raids in our county, and the best we can get out of you is that we don't do this. There's three other counties who've already passed those resolutions. Four, I could tell you that this is the baseline of what we need. This county needs to step up. The Immigrant Trust Act is like baseline, bare-bones, basic protections for people who are suffering in this county. At the moment, this county, this group of commissioners should be funding the, funds for the disappeared, for families who were paying the rent fine last month and who can't now. Right now, we're supporting 11 women who have kids under six months old or are pregnant, whose husbands or partners have been disappeared and are in detention or have been sent away. We've spent tens of thousands of dollars on rent and on legal services, and you all are spending money on things that are, I think, are important for a county, but not a county that's on fire. There's a, there's a fire going on right now. Mental health services in the school for kids with disappeared parents, rent supports for families of the disappeared, and communication with the businesses in this county that are stuck in the middle of this, and with attempt agencies. There are 652 bonded warehouses in the state, and 70 of them are in this county. Three of them have been the centerpiece of the most outrageous, Pinochet-style disappearances that I've seen in my lifetime here, and just in the last couple of months. And the fact that you all are just not even putting this on the agenda, month after month, is an absolute scourge. Thank you very much.
Anyone else who wants to state your name and address, and you have five minutes?
Paul Peliquin, 241A, Mayflower Way, Monroe Township, 08831. I'd like to speak in favor of the Immigrant Trust Act from a different standpoint, from the use of which it's, it's terrible. The President is using immigration to establish his own private army to go into democratic jurisdictions, not, not for any good purposes, supposedly for security and safety, in places where crime is going down. It's all, and he's also demonizing our immigrants for his own purposes. His tax cut, said that in a decade, will put a trillion dollars in the hands of the 1%. At the same time, over that decade, we'll have lost $500 billion in Medicare, because unfunded tax cuts under the PEGO rule, laws of Congress, require cuts, unfunded tax cuts, balanced by cuts. And this Congressional Budget Office puts the cuts to Medicare at $500 billion. The cuts to Medicaid will total $930 billion. That's over the following decade, that's over a trillion dollars in cuts to healthcare of people in the United States. You don't need an academic study to know that people are going to die when you cut healthcare on that scale of Americans. But Yale and the University of Pennsylvania determined that 51,000 people per year will die because of those cuts. And the demonization of immigration is to hide from those, those kinds of things that the President is doing to attack the living standards and lives of Americans. Over that 10-year period, 500,000 people will die. That's the amount of people that died in World War II. So when we honor our soldiers at the beginning of meetings, we should honor the people that the President is killing, year, will kill, year after year with his cuts. The 9/11, 3,000 people died yearly, that's, that's multiples of people that the President is killing with his cuts to healthcare. And he's hiding And he's hiding it by demonizing a small portion of a population, which is important. He scares away the farmworkers and there's no one pulling the crops. I mean, it's disgusting. And this body should change its policy and support the Immigrant Trust Act. It's a historic moment because we're facing fascism if we don't.
Say your name and address. Any of you have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Anna Falashevitz. I live at 329 David Street in South Amboy. Good evening. I'm a lifelong resident of Middlesex County, currently presiding at South Amboy. I'm also a member of the Democratic Socialists of America and a union representative for HPAU Local 5094, for Rutgers University in Merlin. In recent years, articles have been published naming Middlesex County not only the most diverse county in the state but also one of the most diverse in the country. To be clear, this was written as praise, something to be proud of. The current presidential administration affords diversity as evidenced by the dramatic overfunding of ICE and implementation of 3,000 arrests-per-day quota. Every day, families are being torn apart. People who have committed no crimes are jailed in harsh conditions with poor treatment. If Delaney Hall makes visitors wait outside in any weather, you can only imagine how people who actually were abducted by ICE are treated behind closed doors where the public can't keep in mind ICE. Commissioner Rios, you mentioned passing legislation is not something Middlesex County normally does. But this is not a normal time. And in my life, I've found, you know, the excuse "we've always done things this way" is just an excuse that prevents positive change from happening. We need to change with the times. You said you hope ICE treats people with dignity and respect, which speaks volumes to me about how disconnected you are from the issues our immigrant community is facing. There are ambulances called when these warehouse raids happen. With three of these raids in this county this year, the time to pass an Immigrant Trust Act resolution is now. Middlesex County is being targeted for its diversity and we need to show that diversity is our strength, not our weakness. Will you stand with us in this fight? Please pass an Immigrant Trust Act resolution just like before other counties did. We come to you, our elected officials, to implore you to take action. Advocate for our community, I'm sorry, advocate for our county's immigrant community before we no longer have one. Advocate for the people who, for the children who are getting there or parents taken away or the wives and girlfriends who can't pay rent on their own when their husband gets taken away by ICE. And then what happens next? Evictions? What do you have after evictions? Nothing good. How hard it is to get housing in New Jersey? I'm a social worker. Extremely difficult. People are homeless for years. So if you care about this county, make an exception and fight fascism and vote on this. It's not a lot that we're asking for. So many towns have done it. Four counties have done it. To not do it is just like, to me, it makes it seem like this issue isn't important enough. So show us that it's important. Thank you.
Next. Say your name and address. Any of you have five minutes.
My name is Nikki Dieter. I'm a resident of Highland Park and I've been a Middlesex County resident my whole life. I had a page and a half here to read to you about the Immigrant Trust Act. I don't think I need to tell you much about it. But what I do want to emphasize is this is a moment of inflection here. It's not business as usual. It's not the Democratic Party acting as usual, saying, "We just have to get along and we just have to respect people." And so this is a time to do something about what's going on in this country and particularly to our neighbors in our community. By passing this resolution, you can affirm that Middlesex County stands for trust, inclusion, and community safety. You can join the municipalities and counties throughout New Jersey and urge our legislature and governor to pass this act via a resolution. Like other speakers have said, it's time to make an exception to a policy that doesn't make sense in this situation when our fellow citizens in our county are under attack by our federal government and their militias, basically. Thank you.
Say your name and address. Any of you have five minutes.
I'm Josephine Barretas from 14 Marion Court, St. Louis. I just, I come to ask you guys to support the Immigration Trust Act because I work alongside these people and they are the hardest-working people I know. They are working behind the curtain, all the things that you enjoy, your meal, the clean rooms. That all is the hard work of immigrants. And to be honest, we're all immigrants. Like either our family was an immigrant that originated from Italy or France. That's still, you know, we all came from immigrants. So we are like, how are we excluding these people who are looking, who are working really hard to achieve the American dream, which is what we have promised to people who've come here? And it's just, I feel like there's a disconnect because you guys don't see how hard these people work and how they're just like you and me. Like, I care about them so much. And I think you guys should too. Like, everything you enjoy, our supermarkets, the spas. If you took away the people who work there, you won't have those fun things to enjoy. And they have families and they get sick. And they need to be able to go see a doctor and to be able to come back to work, like, and not spread infections or diseases within the workplace. Like, because they are, we are there. We are there behind every building, every business. So everyone's health is a priority. Like, even those workers who, regardless of their status, they affect us and we should protect them. We should care about them. And I think New Jersey can be a leader in this great knowing of compassion, of knowing that they're like us. Like, we're all very much the same. And I hope that New Jersey can stand up for immigrants because we all are, like, in some way from our families. We all came here for that chance to work hard, to make money, to have a living and a home. That's all we want. And that's what I want for my coworkers. They're not here because they're afraid. But I can be here today to talk about all the people I've worked with. I want you to know that they are there, that we are here. They're behind everything. So we should take care of each other. How many more minutes do I have? Or is that it?
Sorry, seven seconds.
Okay, yeah. So thank you for listening to me. And this is really just a call for compassion, to have that safe space in Middlesex County where I live and we all live. Thank you.
Say your name and address. Any of you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jenny Pisaki. I live in Creberry, which is in Middlesex. I also happen to be a community social worker in Monroe. My son is a student at Rutgers and lives in New Brunswick. And I've had the pleasure of being able to live safely and freely in Middlesex County for 13 years. The reason I'm here for you tonight, be for you tonight is, as are several others in this room, asking you to change your policy or adjust your policy in relation to whether or not this body will weigh in on an issue that is currently before the state legislature. Before I was a social worker, I was a family court mediator both in New York and in New Jersey for 17 years. And as a mediator, you know that policies are not regulations. They are policies. They can be adjusted when the need warrants it. What I would like to point out is, in the New Jersey State Legislature, there is something known as a discharge petition. It is a mechanism that allows legislators to bring a bill out of committee and onto the floor for immediate consideration. This process is used when the committee chair or others refuses to bring a bill forward. Now, that mechanism would not exist if there weren't a whole situation where sometimes legislators hold things back. Sometimes the president of the Senate holds things back. Sometimes the speaker of the assembly holds things back. But when that happens, the people can rise up, reach out to their legislators and say, "We demand that this issue get brought out of committee and brought forward." In order to use this mechanism, this discharge petition, what has to happen is residents as well as local leaders have to rise up and say, "This is an issue that cannot get stuck in committee and actually has to be brought to the floor." Four other counties have said this is important enough to get out of committee and brought to the floor. I would love it if Middlesex County would also rise up and say, "This is an issue that does not get to die in committee but has to be brought to the floor for a vote." That is something you can do as an alteration of your policy. That is the statement you made the last time I was here a month ago, that it goes against your policy. But as I said earlier, policies are made to be adjusted when the situation warrants it. In this instance, the Immigrant Trust Act is important enough to adjust your policy, to reach out to your legislators as we are also reaching out to our legislators and insisting that this no longer sits in committee and gets brought to the floor and gets turned into a vote immediately. Thank you.
Say your name and address. Any of you have five minutes.
My name is Tiffany Roddick. 140 Main Street, Metuchen. I'm always so nervous when I do this. Well said. It's like the bare minimum that we've been asking for from the state itself. This is the bare minimum we're asking from our legislators in our counties, in our towns. And this is what democracy is from the ground up because we're going town by town, county by county to push support towards the state. Because what is happening is absolutely not okay. And when I was here last time speaking, you had made a comment about how this is above your pay grade to engage with a bill that's in front of the state. And, but four other counties have done so. We are on our 27th town. We just got Perth Amboy last week to pass their resolution as far as cities go. This is not difficult. It's symbolic more than anything else and shows the community that maybe you stand with them a little bit and we care about their well-being because there is so much fear going on. And when I look up what county commissioners do, it says providing quality services, promoting safety, health inclusion, well-being for all residents, all residents through effective public programs and services. So it kind of does sound like support for something like this would be in your pay grade. I was not, I'm a manager of a restaurant so I know a lot of people, a lot of immigrants of all different variations of status. Everyone is terrified. I have U.S. citizens that are Hispanic that are afraid to drive around in their cars that work for me. Because it doesn't matter what your status is. This is not about immigrants. This is about because you looked up hard. This is racism, pure and simple. That's all it is. And cruelty is a point. Middlesex is an extremely hard-hit county right now. There's a major escalation going on in the state of New Jersey. I am not a lifelong activist. I'm part of immigrant rights group now because I was compelled to stand up and speak out because what is happening is not okay. I have friends that I care about. I have people who work for me that I deeply care about. They're human beings. I have been in all three and why are these warehouse raids all in Middlesex County? Weird, right? Not Middlesex's problem at all, none. All three. And I've been in all of them where they pull up 50 cars deep to haul dozens of people out with authorization to work here, work-permitted people, out of their jobs after they cuff everybody and put bands on their arms like cattle. And in the aftermath, we go in and I'm shaking, crying, staff and employees and families showing up to look for their loved ones because they got that one last phone call that they were being taken away. And they are not let out. We are working with so many families from this last raid in Abunel. They have work permits. They had, were allowed to be here. They were allowed to be working. They've just been transferred just been transferred from state to state, state to state. Families can't get in contact with them. This is crazy, what's happening in this country. From a Middlesex County resident, from a New Jersey resident, we need some support. We are asking for you to alter your policy, that is the policy, and just bring it to the floor for a vote on an Immigrant Trust Act resolution, to try to give the state some encouragement to do the right thing. We need to stand in solidarity strong in this state. Twenty-five percent of the residents in the state are immigrants. Remember that. They fund our economy, they spend money in our businesses, they work in our businesses. You remove them, it's a domino effect of collapse, because without their labor and without their money, a lot of businesses would not survive. This is just pure fact. Pure fact. It's not just about their labor, it's about all the businesses that they spend money at. Do we need all these businesses without them? Then you have a bunch of unemployed small business owners as well. Let's just destroy our economy. We're all people, this is about basic human dignity, and everyone deserves some. Thank you for letting me speak.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Andre Kimurunai, and I'm double tribe in New Brunswick. I mean, we're gonna say that hasn't been said by previous speakers in more technical ways about what this body can do in order to push the protections of immigrants, of human beings in the state. All I would say is, for twenty-three years out of thirty that I've been on this earth, I've called Middlesex County my home. I've been proud to do so, I continue to be proud to do so now. I have many happy memories all over this county. This county stands at a historic time, and there are not many times in history, or indeed in your own life, where you can say that you stand at a crossroads in the country's history, in the state's history, in the state, in the history of this locality. We're seeing a rogue agency come down from outside the state and within this state, kidnapping human beings, putting them in steel cages, stashing them away from their loved ones, for no other reason, because for want of a paper. I challenge this body to stand up and to deny this inhuman actions that have been done by this rogue agency that have been put into place by a fascist regime in this country. I implore you, and I challenge you, to look into this issue deeply. And I implore you and I challenge you, even though I know it's outside of Purdue of this county, to go, to go to the structures that have been created by the federal government in this state, to house those kidnapped, to go to Elizabeth Detention Center, to go to Delaney Hall, to see the work that tireless advocates do in order to try to blunt the suffering that has been extended in this state. See what they do to human beings, see what they do to sons, fathers, sisters, mothers, grandfathers, grandmothers, their tears. I implore you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Troy Shardier Biggnapiano. I live on forty-eight Stanton Street, South River, which is in Middlesex. And I do feel that everything that's been said before is pretty sufficient already, makes a pretty compelling case for passing a resolution in favor of the Immigrant Trust Act. But I figured I'd supply just a little bit of supplementary information about it, that being the, some of the cities, some of the cities that have passed resolutions in favor of the Immigrant Trust Act, and the four counties that have taken upon themselves and shown the compassion and the concern for the safety of our communities, do also show that they stand on the side of immigrants in this state. Atlantic City, Cranberry, Edison, Highland Park, Jersey City, New Brunswick, Princeton, Trenton, Newark, and my last example is Rowland, but those aren't all of the cities that have passed resolutions in favor of this. In terms of counties, these counties have declared that it is within their power and within their jurisdiction to support the pressure campaign currently going on in support of this act. That being Essex County, Hudson County, Union County, and Somerset County. Those four have decided that is well within their powers in order to support this act. Now, I understand the precedent that you guys have set for yourselves, that you can't, or you choose not to, put out resolutions in favor of a specific act or law. And normally, I would respect that, right? But these are, these are pretty unprecedented times that we're going through already. People are being kidnapped off of the streets. Kids are being admitted to hospitals because they have panic attacks and eating disorders of either themselves or their parents being taken out of their places of work or at their schools. Kids are not feeling safe right now in their own communities. These are unprecedented times. Now, me personally, I think that what's going on right now is so devastating, you can't even describe it with words, to the point that traditions kind of don't matter as much, right? And I really ask that you guys decide, in this one specific case, that tradition and precedence isn't going to be prioritized over people being kidnapped, or people being afraid of living their own lives in their communities. But if you decide that that is the case, that tradition is more important than these matters right now, then I do ask, and it doesn't have to be answered, but I do ask each and every one of you, a few months from now, maybe a year from now, maybe a couple of years from now, if you'll be okay going through your everyday life and thinking to yourself that I, as a leader, as a representative of my community, as a civil servant, that you are okay, that you did not do anything during the time when it mattered most, that you guys did nothing. And that's my question to you. And that's it.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Bill Wallen, I'm a footbridge man, forty-eight yards from the place. I spent my life working as a legal service attorney, and I dealt with vulnerable people, people who were convicted who needed code enforcement, abused women who needed domestic violence help, children who need to protect services. And I know, I mean, it just astonishes me that you would sit there and not do anything when people who don't have status here need those services, and would be afraid to seek them. It just is amazing for me that Middlesex County residents who don't have status, who need those services, would not be able to access them because of fear. Right now, people are afraid to go to mass, people are afraid to go shopping, people are afraid just to walk the street, let alone seek state intervention when they need it. You say that it's not your policy to get involved in legislative matters. Well, what would Jesus do? Would he say, "Not policy, I mean, if it's right, it's right." The other thing I want to mention is that, you know, the Statue of Liberty, there's words written on there, they have great meaning to me, for my family and for all of Americans, really. And that's, "Give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses, your earning to be free, your wretched refuse of your teeming shores. Send these, the homeless, tenders, across to me. I lift my lamp beside the golden door." What is this county doing to those people? We have a statue sitting in New York Harbor with those words written on it. Do they mean anything to you guys? It just seems kind of lame, and I don't mean to be disrespectful, but it's a lame response that, "Oh, we don't do that." Again, what would Jesus do? Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to speak.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hi, good evening. My name's Daniel Lima, Lauter Avenue, I'm actually in Southbound Brook, Somerset County. I work, I went to Rutgers as an undergrad, I got my MSW here at Rutgers as well, and I currently work at Rutgers as well, in the research division. So I'm here, as everyone else has said, I'm not, you know, in support of the Immigrant Trust Act, a resolution to support what's already been done, especially in your neighboring county. You know, as I quote, "The resolution is showing that this board believes in love and compassion." That was said by Deputy Director Melody Marano in Somerset County. In Essex County, we have Mr. Hill, who, in a quote, mentioned, "It is our hope that this act will be passed by your state legislature to protect your neighbors, coworkers, and friends, and give them the peace of mind while attempting to build a better life." With this resolution, we are sending a clear message. Immigrants are vital part of our community and need to be protected from unfair treatment." End quote. And this is from Commissioner Brendan Hill in Essex County. So these are just two examples of two counties that have raised this recently, in the past two months. I know, and, you know, as an elected official from one of the most diverse counties in the state, in the most diverse state, this is just, you know, lending your support, it's not doing anything else, it's the bare, you know, minimum that you can support those that you, that you, you know, serve, and also those that are unable to, you know, just the people that live in your county. So I hope that you, just like your other neighboring counties and county commissioners have already done, and support this, especially in this unfortunate time period that we're living in, historical, and, yeah, as fascism is, you know, put in half already within the country. Thank you.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Dylan Cohen, eighty-five Millers Grove Road in Delmeade. I'm not a resident of Middlesex County, I'm a neighbor from Montgomery in Somerset County, but I am here to ask you to join my town and my county, and three other counties, and dozens of towns across the state, large towns, small towns, to, I'm asking you to make an exception to your policy and pass a resolution in support of the Immigrant Trust Act. It is super important for the legislature to hear from municipalities that there is broad support for this legislation across the state. My husband is an immigrant, my children are children of an immigrant, many of my friends and neighbors are immigrants and children of immigrants. So this issue is very personal for me. And reading the news these days, I'm very fearful for their safety, because it's very clear from news reports that legal immigration status is no barrier to being picked up by ICE. Furthermore, all community members benefit from the whole community getting access to services that they pay taxes for regardless of their immigration status. We are all safer when our sick neighbors can access healthcare without fear of ICE. We are all safer when our neighbors can report crimes without fear of ICE. We are all safer when our law enforcement resources can focus on their core public safety duties rather than being allocated to support ICE detentions of individuals who pose no threat to our communities. And I want to call that one additional consideration beyond the public safety and moral benefits of the Immigrant Trust Act. As other people have noticed, noted here, Middlesex County has already experienced several large ICE raids, and they've swept up dozens of workers and many businesses in Middlesex, like the warehouses, that were raided, depend critically on immigrant workers. And those businesses will experience disruptions and incur unexpected costs in dealing with the raids. New Jersey resources should not be used to enable economic harm to New Jersey businesses. And New Jersey taxpayers should not have to foot the bill for any harms that New Jersey resources could participate in. Let's be clear, the Immigrant Trust Act is not going to stop the raids, but it can put in very significant speed bumps against the damage that it inflicts. I want that speed bump to protect our communities from ICE's horrifying activities. I urge you to add this county's voice to statewide calls for action on the Immigrant Trust Act. New Jersey cannot afford to wait. Thank you.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name's Debbie Farber, I'm from, uh, for the eighty-seven Highland Avenue, Orange Quarter of New Jersey. As elected officials, your constituents are asking you now to protect your disappeared citizens. They are your citizens, and they need to represent them by supporting the Immigrant Trust Act. This country's laws are based on the Constitution, and even if Trump is trying to burn into ashes, it still stands as American law, the Fifth Amendment, which applies to all citizens' due process, states, no person should be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process. We need to protect our undocumented and immigrant citizens by living in law enforcement cooperation with ICE. Please consider changing a policy that it does not stand because of unprecedented times. Represent your constituents and support the Immigrant Trust Act. Thank you.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Linda Stork, I live at twelfth Park Boulevard in New Brunswick. And I think I'm not gonna repeat everything that everybody has already said. I commend everybody who spoke very eloquently in favor of the Immigrant Trust Act, in favor of this body passing a resolution in favor of the Immigrant Trust Act. I would just like to comment on a few personal experiences, that it seems that maybe, from some comments that were made, people might not be aware of how serious this situation really is in our county and in our neighborhoods. And, you know, a comment was made about, you know, keeping all our citizens feeling secure and at peace, something to that effect. Yet, no. No, they don't now, already, the fear is, you know, running rampant because of the way that these things are happening. You know, being a good person and, you know, following the law, doing things right is not a protection, and people are, as they realize that, are understandably fearful. It almost seems like doing things the right way calls more attention to you because you're not trying to, criminals hide. If they wanted to find criminals, they'd have to work a little harder. But, you know, people that are just going to work, that are filing their taxes with an ITIN number, or, you know, the information on their, that are getting a driver's license, that are going through the asylum petition process, and have a court date, a pending case, that have waited out, in that process you have to wait one hundred and fifty days, they waited one hundred and fifty days, they then applied for a work permit and got permission to work. Yeah, it means nothing. It means nothing. People at the raid that were trying to show their work permit and their date for their asylum case, the agents did not care. They're, they're not looking, they're, hmm. These are not the criminals. And in fact, money, resources, and personnel have been pulled from the Division of ICE that did actual criminal, large-scale narco-traffic investigations, child trafficking rings. Those people were pulled to come round up our neighbors, working in the warehouse, minding their business, following the law, with no infractions on their record. What kind of sense does this make? FBI, they pulled them too. Important investigations, counterterrorism. They've gutted those agencies to send people here to round up hard-working, everyday people, some of whom have been here for decades, without having any problem, they've been contributing members of our communities, some of whom came more recently under duress from their country and have followed the procedure to file for asylum, as is their right under US law and international law. And they did that. And they followed all the rules. And this is how they get repaid? This is insanity, and this is having a lot of effects. One of the statistics, what it was, forty percent of the children in our state are, come from an immigrant family where at least one person in the family has a non, like, permanent status, like, doesn't have their status completely. So, think about the mental health of our kids. Our kids are wondering, are they gonna come from home from school and mommy and/or daddy won't be there? I have had people ask me, you know, to sign the, give my information, so, time's up, I'll probably bid, if I have to go pick the kids up from school and then try and figure out what to, I mean, it's heartbreaking.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Greg DeVitriannis, from Edison, New Jersey. Also, as you probably expected, speaking in support of the Immigrant Trust Act. I've been a resident of Edison for about ten years, my wife and I. She's a recent citizen, as of the end of last year. I think of where I'd, where would I be if that was not the case, I'd be living in a lot of fear right now, I think, we both would. As opposed to now, where we're just living in fear on behalf of other people. That's why we're here. I'm not a public speaker, I'll keep it short. Everyone's already kind of said what has to be said, but if the only reason you're not passing this is procedural, you should reconsider that, reconsider it quick. As everyone said, a bunch of other municipalities have already passed a resolution. Hope that Middlesex continues to do that, or passes it, rather. Before this year, it wasn't very politically accurate. Before this year, I wasn't very politically active. Now I'm kind of considering myself more of that. You know, if it comes to it, you know, the election's coming up, it'll be mentally innovative. Hope you guys reconsider. Thank you.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening. Still Charlie Cradaville, still editor of New Brunswick today. I want to start by just saying thank you to everybody who came to the meeting, all the advocates speaking up, you know, educating and advocating for a better county. That's what we need, so I'm going to ask you to keep coming. We need you. Mr. Director, you started by saying that there's a longstanding policy to not pass resolutions supporting our opposing state or federal legislation. Who made this policy? This board. Okay. And when did you do that?
I can't remember right now, Charlie.
You've been on the board a long time.
Been a few years, I would say. Mr. Councilman, might I correct that assumption?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Is it in writing?
Yes.
It's in the administrative.
It's in the administrative code for the county that you don't pass resolutions.
Do you think it's in there specifically that we're talking about?
Okay, so is it in writing?
I don't know specifically.
Okay, so it might not even be in writing?
It might not.
Right, okay. The reason I ask is because it was also the longstanding policy of this county that members of the public could make general public comments at the board's reorganization meeting. You know this, Director, because you've been on the board since 2008. That was the case until 2024, when that policy was changed. When there's a policy that gives the public a right to speak to you, and you get sick of that, you change the policy. But when residents ask you to do something relatively minor, basically just to pass a piece of paper that asks your buddies to pass a bill down in Trenton, oh, we can't, we can't go against policy, right? And I do think that the correct word for that is lame. It is a lame excuse, pitiful, and "I know you know you could do this. You could do this tonight." Any one of you could make a motion right now and say, "I make a motion to pass a resolution supporting the Immigrant Trust Act." And one of you could second it, and you could take the vote, and you could be done with it. But you haven't done that yet, and I'm going to keep pressuring you. Last time I addressed you about this, I implored you to meet with the advocates. Did any of you do that?
Were we, I don't think anybody reached out to us to meet with us.
Okay, you didn't have their contact info from last time?
I think I did.
Did you get, did you get an email on what? You spoke already, Charlie, again.
I, it seems like they're correcting the record, so...
This is your time.
Thank you. So apparently, you haven't met with the advocates yet. I hope that you'll do that. I hope that all of you will do that. I also ask you to speak to your pals in the legislature. Mr. Director, did you have a conversation with your rep, Speaker Craig Coughlin, about this bill?
I'm not going to be cross-examined to you, Charlie.
It's a simple question. I came to the mic and I asked you to do it. Now I'm coming back. I'm asking, did you do it? You're not going to comment if you spoke with Speaker Coughlin about it. You're going to keep it a secret if you actually discussed it.
Yeah, we'll say that for no, thank you.
Uh, we need order here.
And let me be clear, the reason I asked you to do that is because I want to see the bill passed, right? And so if you don't pass the resolution, but you do get Craig Coughlin to help it move down in Trenton, that's good. I want that to happen. It's not about, you know, winning us versus you. It's about getting something done for the residents of Middlesex County. And so that's why I'm following up, to follow through on my request that you use your power to speak to your rep, Speaker Craig Coughlin, and ask him to let the bill move. Why won't you do that? I mean, this is really outrageous.
I'm really being my comment, Charlie.
And it wasn't good enough. You need to do better.
No matter what I tell you, Charlie is never good enough for you. So you're just coming here for instance, in front of all these people here, just to make a statement here for yourself, for your agenda, for your political agenda.
Sir, this is about our county. I have my opinions. I'm entitled to them. I'm asking you to take an action. I asked you to contact Speaker Coughlin. And frankly, you know, I asked all of you to have these conversations, to push this legislation. You said, you said, you said...
Your time is up.
You do advocate individually for bills. You said you advocate individually for bills. Why won't you do it for this one? Why won't you?
One more time and you'll be removed from here.
Director.
Second.
There's no need to threaten me.
Director, I did, Director, I did want to correct the record. I was contacted by advocates, and my schedule didn't allow me to meet with them, but I was contacted personally, and I will be meeting them, so.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Mariah Turpin. I live at fifty-two Harvard Road.
Where, ma'am?
Fifty-two.
Can you speak a little closer to the microphone?
Fifty-two Harvard Road.
Which town?
Which town?
Harlan.
Okay, thank you.
I'm a resident of Middlesex County, speaking on behalf of your young constituents. I'm here to let you guys know that we see, we are seeing what is going on in the country, and a lot of us are simply blinded by the indifference taught by our elders. However, I'm seeing posts on my front stories, and they're becoming real and real, more real and real for me. For, from increased healthcare for millions, such as my close friend with stage-four cancer, to strange men knocking on my window claiming to be ICE. I know a lot of young adults in Middlesex have a feeling that the world sucks and nothing's going to change, cemented into our hearts. On October seventeenth, men in completely blacked-out cars with no front plates, tinted plate covers from Adasty knocked on my window and asked me if I seen a missing person. The image was a picture of a picture. The men wore tactical gear, no uniforms, no ID. They asked me if I seen this missing person. I asked them, "Is it a missing person or is it a fugitive?" They said, "It's a missing person." So I suspect, they said they suspected somebody was being trafficked out of my neighbor's house. So I got scared. I went to my stepmom, and I was like, "Let me ask and see if anybody knows anything." And I noticed that there were no local police officers. These people didn't have lights. They didn't have anything identifying themselves. So I asked them, "Who are you guys? Are you guys ICE?" And they said, "Yes, we are." I didn't believe them because I know that ICE looks for fugitives, not missing people. So I called my local police department, and I started to have an anxiety attack because, as you can see, I have anxiety. So when the police came, they told me to calm down, that I was overreacting. They did not check to see if these men had identification warrants or anything. They just told me I was overreacting and that I could go to jail for felony of false reporting a crime. So I went to go take pictures of these morons, just so I can report to you guys. And the police once again threatened me with a felony of impeding on an investigation that they had no idea whether or not it was legit or not. They couldn't tell you, nor could I. Moral of the story is that you're disaware of what's going on in the world, and the more that you allow other sectors of the government to abuse their power, the more pissed we are at you. I've been calling Congressman Frank Pallone. I've been calling Senator Owen Henry, and it seems like they care about the nation of Israel's purse more than they care about their constituents. I've been posting my phone calls, and I've been getting feedback from my friends from Middlesex. Needless to say, Frank and Owen, your time is up, and you will be getting primaried. But your dad won't tell you that because you guys don't account for your young constituents. With that being said, I invite you all to vote yes on the Immigration Trust Act resolution. We guys are watching you, and we're absolutely ready to vote you guys out if you're not ready to vote for us. Constituents, please call Frank Pallone and Owen Henry, demand that they publicly condemn the crimes of ICE and federal agents. All these men and ladies have gotten way too comfortable because they think we forgot. We did not forget about you guys. My name is Mariah Turpin, and I'm ripping the blindfold of indifference off of the youth. I suggest or request that you guys come correct because we definitely will as well. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. There are motions to adjourn. All in favor? Oppose? Motion carries, meaning adjourn.